I'm going to call this meeting to order. This is our public presentation on our budget for the 2020 budget. It's February 4th, and I'd like to ask everyone to join me and pledge allegiance to our flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Joanna, could we have a roll call?
Mr. Oer.
Here.
Mr. Prail.
Here.
Um, Mr. Fulton.
Here.
Mr. McDonald.
Here.
Mr. Flynn.
Here.
Mr. Ellis.
Here.
Mr. Morgan. Ms. Proctor. Mr. Danning. Mr. Fomer. Mr. Chapman.
Here.
Mr. Chapman. Mr. Metelopoulos. Mr. DeShane.
Here.
Um, Ms. Fontaine.
Here.
Ms. Madigan. Mr. Melberg. And Mr. Adams. All set.
Thank you. Having a quorum, I will now open the public hearing on our budget, and I will turn it over to Dr. Denise Pigeon. Not yet.
Okay, it's fine, I present after the public.
Yeah, I'm going to have your head down. Any public comments on the, this evening, will be taken at the end of the program, and they must be limited to three minutes and pertain particularly to the budget items that are talked about. And now, Dr. Denise Pigeon.
Good evening. It's my pleasure to present to you the proposed FY '21 budget for the Neshoba Valley Technical School District. I will be presenting a similar presentation that was provided to all of our town officials on Friday morning. First, I would like to just take a few moments to thank the school committee for your active involvement in the budget development process. As you know, the budget subcommittee has been actively involved since October with reviewing the budget as it was built from the ground up. We are in, we're now a few years into using Google Sheets to build the budget from the ground up, where all staff participate in the process, and it's all built in real time, and you can see it as it develops. I'd also like to put out a special thank you to Jean Savoy, the business manager, and our entire business department for the many hours of work that went into developing the budget, and also to our leadership team who are here this evening as well for the many hours of preparation. This is a special year, as you know. We are celebrating our 50th year at Neshoba Tech. You'll see that we are using the new 50th year logo on all of our materials that we are putting out to the public. Special thank you to Kalandra Bootin for designing the logo. She did a wonderful job. I also want to share that we have, as part of our 50th year, we've rebranded and we now have a new website. If you have not had a chance to see our new website, please check it out at neshobatech.net. Again, featuring the wonderful new logo developed by one of our students. On our website is also the link to the district school committee, where you can access all of the agendas and minutes for all of our school committee meetings, and all of the materials that we present for the FY '21 budget are posted on our website as well. I also want to share that as part of our new branding of our new website, we've gone with a new app. So, Neshoba Tech now has a new app. If you search in your, in your App Store for Neshoba Valley Technical, you'll be able to download the NT app. Of interest to this committee and the public is that through that app, if you go to the Events tab, you can access our, again, our agendas and minutes very easily to see all of the information that's presented at school committee, and document, under the Documents tab, any information regarding the FY '21 budget. And here's a promotional video. Introducing the brand-new app for Neshoba Valley Technical School District on Android and iPhone. It's everything Neshoba Valley Tech in your pocket. This is the home screen. Tap the three horizontal lines in the top-left or swipe right to see all the menu items. To turn on push notifications, tap Settings and select Turn On Notifications. This app makes applying to Neshoba Tech even easier. Under Menu, click Apply Here to complete the online application for high school students. The Events section shows a list of all events throughout the district. You can use this button to add an event to your calendar, or tap here to share the event with friends and family. Live feed is where you'll find updates from administration about what's going on in the district right now, whether that's celebrating a student's success or reminding you about an upcoming deadline. Search "Neshoba Valley Technical HS" in the App Store or Play Store to explore the app for yourself. It's everything Neshoba Valley Tech in your pocket. So, we are pleased to have this app available because we do know that it makes it more accessible for folks to receive information regarding our school district, and we encourage everyone to download it and begin using it. It's important for us to talk a bit about our school district when we're talking about our FY '21 budget to understand that we are a regional vocational school district that's made up of eight towns, as you know, and when we get to the member assessments, you will see how the student population from those towns breaks out into that member assessment. We also think it's important to talk about historical enrollment trends. Whenever you're presenting a budget, really, it's about the number of students that you have in your school and the needs of those students in the school, and we like to look at, from a glance, our enrollment trends. So, the past couple of years, we had had a slight decline in district enrollment, but I'm pleased to share with you that enrollment has gone back up again. So, we've had an increase of 18 students overall, 15 of which are from our district towns, and an increase of three students in the non-resident or school choice population. My apologies. In terms of foundation enrollment, these are the changes by the town, which does become important, again, when we get to a further slide regarding the member assessments and how they break down. So, you can see in each town who's gone up in enrollment and who has gone down in enrollment. Air has gone up by four students. Chelmsford has gone up by 14 students. Groton is down by four. Littleton up by six. Pepperill down by one. Shirley up by two. Townsend down by six. No change in Westford for an overall district enrollment increase of 15%. When you run the enrollment numbers with all of the towns, you can see how it breaks down in terms of the percentage of the school population, and this is a very important figure because if you're percentage, if a town's percentage is going up or a town's percentage is going down, that does in fact affect how the member, the member assessment calculations are driven. I also think it's important to take a moment to talk about our student, our school district accountability. In terms of attendance rate, we are still doing very well. We're above the state average. In terms of our four-year graduation rate, also above the state average. Annual dropout rate, below the state average, and 100% of our students are still meeting MasCor requirements. And one slide went too fast for me. In terms of the breakdown of our student population, in terms of special populations, important to note that first language not English, 2.8%. English language learners, .8%, actually well below the state average, but if you were to look at this data as compared to our district towns, we're actually right on par in terms of our EL population. Students with disabilities, our number is significantly higher than that of our sending towns, so we are currently at 33% special education students. We've been as high as 38 and closer to 40%. This year's calculation is 33% compared to the state average, which is about 18.4%, and if you were looking at just high schools, it probably would be closer to about 11%. About half of our students would be considered high need, and just over 20% would be considered economically disadvantaged. And again, I think this is important to understand when you talk about a budget because the needs of your students are what drive a budget. The piece of data about a school district, especially a regional vocational, that in my opinion means the most, is what happens to students after they graduate? What foundation have we given them, and are they successful as they move forward in their lives? Regional vocational schools by law are required to conduct a follow-up study one year after graduation. We're the only type of school district in Massachusetts that is required to do this. Typically, what you would see coming out of a high school is when students graduate, they fill out a survey called Plans of High School Graduates, where they say, "I plan to go to college," or "I plan to go to work." We do that report as well, but in addition to that, we actually go back out with a survey one year later and ask them, "Did you do what you said you were going to do? What are you actually doing?" And in terms of our positive placement rates, we continue to have incredible rates. Using the Perkins Guidelines, 98.8% of our students are positively placed, which means that they are either employed in some type of post-secondary education or in the military. During our budget presentation to our town officials this past Friday, Mr. Slotnick, our new principal, had the opportunity to talk to our town officials about the value of vocational education and what makes Neshoba Tech as a high school unique to our district towns. He provided a wonderful overview, which I will just give briefly, that talks about, really, what makes us unique. Again, we are a regional vocational technical high school. We offer Chapter 74 vocational programming. This is very unique. This is high-quality technical training, over 900 or more hours that students would put into their technical program areas. They finish these programs earning industry credentials, and they're doing all of this along with a full academic course load. As you know, our budget funds 20 technical programs. Our technical programs are driven by labor market needs. We conduct regular surveys of the labor market, of the labor market, and we make adjustments to programs as necessary. In addition to that, we do provide a full complement of academic programming. We have courses at all levels for all students. We have advanced placement. We have early college. In addition to that, our technical programs also focus on additional skills such as management and entrepreneurship and employability, and classes in all of our core academic areas. My slideshow's giving me a hard time here. Here we go. We also have numerous community collaboration partnerships. One of the, we've always had cooperative placement where students on their technical week and their, halfway through their junior year and into their senior year can participate in a work-based program. We recently started internships as well, and we've had wonderful success placing our students on short-term internships. We also have many affiliations with, with different organizations such as Bridges, Angel, Lowell Five, all of which help to support our programming and support the budget. We also fund extracurricular programs, which are noted in the budget, which we'll get to. Admissions, as a rolling admissions process, we are currently accepting applications for 2020, fall of 2020. On Friday, we had the wonderful opportunity to hear about the student experience from Abigail Cronin from Groton, Donald Fraser from Chelmsford, and Brianna Schmoyer from Harvard. All three of these students, as you know, serve as our student representatives to the school committee. It's unfortunate they could not be here this evening, but because our meeting is one week earlier than it normally would be, they are unfortunately all engaged in their extracurricular activities. They are very busy young men and women. They did have a wonderful opportunity to share with our town officials about why they chose to come to Neshoba Tech and to share their stories. Was very well received. Before we get into the, the actual numbers of the budget, I think it's important to also share the good news as we head into the budget season. We work really hard, as you know, to seek any type of grant that we can, state grant, federal grant, whatever it may be. We have actually been very successful in competitive grants. We had numerous years of, of the Max Award of the Workforce Skills Capital Grants, which has really helped us renovate our technical programs while reducing capital costs to our towns. We also received a state Wi-Fi grant that helped us replace quite a bit of our infrastructure for technology, and this year, we also received a competitive state safety grant, and we're awaiting award and very positive about a potential workforce skills grant that would help us upgrade our culinary department. We should know very soon. In terms of students earning a, an additional accolade, each year, the Commissioner of Education nominates five students from Massachusetts to go forward for national competition for the CTE Presidential Scholars. Absolutely unheard of, but this year, two students from Neshoba Tech were of those five. So, two students of the five that were selected statewide came right here from Neshoba Tech, Abigail Cronin and Elliot Gail. So, we're quite proud of this accomplishment. In addition, we went to Nationals for Skills USA. We had numerous students. In fact, some of them are here this evening behind the cameras, and we'll introduce them very soon. Brian McCall of Pepperill won a statewide gold medal. Jason Gendron of Drakeit actually won a national gold medal. Olivia Spoff of Pepperill. Sam Archer, a post-grad from Pepperill. All of these students went on and competed at Nationals, and we came home with a gold medal. And again, like I said, one of the students is behind the camera this evening, and we'll make sure we recognize him soon. In terms of another first for Neshoba Tech, we were the first vocational school in the state to earn the early college designation. We've always had dual enrollment programs and concurrent enrollment programs here at Neshoba Tech. We went through the process to obtain this designation. It was a lengthy process, and we're very proud to have been recognized by Governor Baker. Essentially, students who attend Neshoba Tech at no cost to the student can earn up to 12 credits by taking courses right here at Neshoba Tech. In terms of capital, we have worked very hard to reduce costs for capital. Whenever we have the opportunity, we have, again, sought out grants. In this case, we went forward last year, as you know, we had two warrant articles at town meeting. One of the warrant articles was a traditional budget, and one of the warrant articles was to approve an MSBA project to replace three aging sections of our roof. Pleased to share that 100% of our towns voted positively to have this project go forward. It was a very tight timeline, but we pulled it off. Again, special thank you to Jean Savoy and Paul Jussom, who worked endless hours to make this happen. The day school got out, the project began, all the materials were delivered, and true to the word of the contractor, all of the materials were picked up and school was able to open on time without any issues. We were also pleased to be able to time this the way we had hoped, which is we had a, a piece of debt that was coming off of the books. We had a previous roof project coming off at the end of FY '20, so we wanted this project to come online at the beginning of FY '21 with an attempt to keep the costs structured to our towns so that there was not a large change or fluctuation in the debt service to towns. We're suc, we were very successful in doing that, and as you see when we get to the budget slides, the overall increase to all eight of our towns was about $25,000 in the category of debt, and we did manage to tackle a major capital project. In addition, we've really been using the resources that are available to us right here in the school, and that is our students. We have so much talent right here in the building. We've been using the students more and more to complete capital projects, which, again, as you know, offsets the cost to the budget. What you see in these first two pictures on the left are students from our electrical program that were actually running wire to help implement the safety grant that I noted on a previous slide. They were running some of the cabling and saving some of the costs to be able to accomplish a larger project with less funds needed, and it was a wonderful real-world experience. Student on the right is doing some work in our dental and health program. They are in the process of completely renovating that technical area, plumbing, carpentry, electrical. They are doing all of the work. And some more photos of the work that's happening in dental and health. In terms of the overall budget, this is sort of the bird's-eye view of the budget. Again, if you look at the top, the first section is in Administration. As you can see, from FY '20 to FY '21, very little change in terms of the request. In fact, as you know, because salaries do increase and contractual requirements increase, we actually had to do some decreasing to have the number come in where you see it. The overall difference in the 1,000s is just about $1,000, $1,700. In terms of the 2,000 section, you actually have to look at the 2,000s from instruction at the top and combine it with the instructional costs put forward to school choice on the bottom of the slide, and altogether, increase in instruction in the budget from FY '20 to FY '21 is a little over 3% of an increase. Again, majority of this would be in increases that go along with salary and contractual obligations, as well as we did have a few larger items this year, such as textbooks for mathematics and some technology needs that we had. In terms of the 3,000s, which is your people services, essentially, this is everything related to the nurse's office, the dean's office, student activities, student security. Pretty much, we had a slight reduction in this, in this category as well. We knew that building this budget, we needed to be conservative. We needed to be watching every, every cost. Again, we built it from the ground up to make sure that our students had what they need, and also were controlling costs. In terms of the 4,000s, operations and maintenance, again, this is an area that's more difficult to control when you're budget planning. If you look at the increase from last year to this year, it's actually just over a 5% increase. Some of the major drivers in this area, a new HVAC maintenance contract, which is a significant increase, a new $8,500 stormwater fee to the town of Westford, and other contractual obligations that we, we must make. In terms of benefits and fixed charges, as you know, listening to the budget development process in our eight towns, this is an area where, no matter how hard you try, the costs are increasing larger than, than one would hope. We have done well managing this, but we are expecting a 6.38% increase in benefits and fixed charges. Again, there's mandatory increases to middlesex retirement, other mandatory increases in our active employees, and insurance increases as well. The last section, 7,000s, asset acquisition and improvements, we are actually proposing to level fund this year, and this is some of the capital projects that we're doing. Again, we are hopeful to continue to use our students through our capital planning. Last year, as you know, we did a full facility assessment, and we have prioritized our capital needs, and we have a three, a five, and eight, and a 10-year plan for our capital programming. The Budget Subcommittee and Equipment and Facility Subcommittee are also actively engaging in researching the possibility of performance contracting and using some of our energy savings to fund future projects. More to come in the next few months regarding that endeavor. The last section, 8,000s, or debt service, a 4.41% increase or a $25,000 increase. Again, we were able to stay true to what we had hoped to do, which was to keep debt level even though a new major project was coming online. Overall, the budget increase that we are presenting at public hearing is a 3.26% increase over last year's budget. In terms of how that works itself out into our member district assessment, again, we are on our second year of correcting the amount of one-time funds that we put into our budget, which I'll describe more on, on the next slide. But if, looking across, you have our, our eight member towns on the left, the number of district students as of October 1, and again, I had mentioned before, that's an important number because that is what drives the students per-town percentage, which is what drives the majority of the rest of the formula. The, the fourth column over, Town's Minimum Contribution, we have no control over that number. That is a number that comes out from the state. That is based on the state formula. With the passing of the Student Opportunities Act, I know there's been a lot of discussion about that. There were, less than half of the school districts in Massachusetts are realizing any major increases in available funds through the Student Opportunities Act, which, again, as we know, it is going to districts that are in desperate need, but it's important to note that Neshoba Tech did not receive any additional increases in direct Chapter 70 aid. But what we did see with the change in the formula is that we have had a significant increase in our town's minimum required contribution. In fact, it's over $600,000 from FY '20 to FY '21 in terms of the new formula, and that varies from town to town. The formula is different from town to town. The next several columns over, Transportation and Capital Equipment, we've level funded from last year. Same thing with the additional assessment. You see the subtotal. Debt service total is up by $25,000 for the total assessment, and again, that was why the percentage per town is an important number to look at. In terms of our draft funding sources, this is the current breakdown. So, again, minimum contribution, if you look at FY '20 to FY '21, there is a significant increase that was driven by the state formula with the changes in the Student Opportunity Act. You see level funding for transportation and capital, level funding for the assessment at $750,000 over minimum. And what I want to draw your attention to, a little further down, we have our, our state transportation reimbursement amounts that we're expecting. Our direct Chapter 70 school aid has only gone up $30 per student, and this is the case for more than 50% of school districts in Massachusetts. They have only seen an increase of $30 per student, and that is true for Neshoba Tech as well. On the positive side, we are expecting a larger excess and deficiency than we had seen last year, so just over $600,000 in excess and deficiency, which will allow us to do some additional funding of OPEB, and I'll talk about that more on a later slide. And also, you will notice that we are proposing to reduce the amount of school choice that we are putting towards the budget. So, we've been pretty vocal about this to our towns, and we've been trying to work collaboratively in terms of weaning Neshoba Tech off of the use of one-time funds to, to essentially meet the budget. We've had a long history here at Neshoba of taking 100% of our excess and deficiency and putting it towards the, the next year's budget, which we are still proposing to do. But unfortunately, during some, some times in recent years, we've been adding more and more of school choice funds to balance the budget. We do not take in as much school choice funds as we have been putting out. So, in FY '19, over 1.4 million. In FY '20, just over a million. You could see that it has been our goal to incrementally reduce the amount of school choice putting towards the budget so that if and when school choice runs out, we will not have a serious shortfall in the budget. Our goal would be, over the course of several years, to come to a point where we are expending out the same amount of school choice that we are taking in. It did help us through some difficult times, but we've been working with our town managers to make that incremental adjustment. In terms of OPEB, our current liability for OPEB is slightly down. We were happy to see it go down, just over 7 million. Our current trust balance is $819,638. A special thank you to Paul Cohen, Town Manager from Chelmsford, and Andrew McLean, Town Administrator from Pepperill, for serving on that trust. And we are proposing this year to fund OPEB at $183,476. This is a slight increase from what was presented at the Town Officials Breakfast on Friday. I want to make everybody aware of that. Our excess and deficiency amount actually came in just today at 2:03, and it was, we had anticipated about $600,000. It came in at about $630,000. So, we are proposing or recommending to the school committee that the additional funds from E&amp;D are put towards increasing OPEB. As you know, during FY '20, we were only able to fund OPEB at $90,000, which we heard from many of our towns, they did not feel was enough, and in the previous year, we did not fund OPEB. So, we think that this would be a wise use of the additional E&amp;D funds. So, next steps, as you know, we are currently in public hearing. Once public hearing is closed, we will have a vote at the school committee meeting to endorse this budget to move forward, and the 45 days will begin before our first town meeting, which is to be held in Westford. And all of our town meetings, all eight of our town meetings will be between March and June. Just some final notes, I think it's important to understand that we have a lot of skills here in the building, and we can also be helpful to our towns, which can also help to save funds, and that is through community service projects and working with our towns to accomplish projects that, working with our students, they have real-world experience, and it saves on the town side as well. We also have a lot of public services that we offer to the residents of our eight sending towns, and I wanted to make sure everyone knew what was available here. As you know, through a partnership with Angel, we do have a full-functioning veterinary clinic. They do serve any customer that is interested. They do also have special programming for those who may qualify for reduced rates, but they will serve any customer. We have a Lowell Five Bank right here on campus and an ATM right out front. Our Cosmo Cut Salon is open several days a week by appointment for anyone interested. We run an excellent restaurant, Elegant Chef Restaurant, and I encourage any member of our resident towns to come and check it out. We also have an early learning center where we enroll preschoolers and toddlers, and this is a wonderful program for our students in, in early childhood. We also do automotive and auto body services to our residents for the vehicles if they have repairs that they need. We have design and visual services and programming and web services that are also available. All of the information to contact these departments is actually located in our budget book, which is on our website. And essentially, that concludes my presentation on the FY '21 budget proposal. I would be glad to answer any questions that the committee may have.
Open the committee up for questions, anything? I know most of us have been immersed in this since October, equipment and facilities in particular, and I know that most of us sat through the presentation the other day, the draft presentation, which was an excellent breakfast meeting. Anyone else, any comments?
Just a quick comment. I again want to commend everyone that's been involved with the budget, and once again, am very impressed that even the additional $30,000 has now been accounted for since Friday. So, bravo, and I concur with where we're about to put that money. It's most important to be sensitive to our sending communities, and I think that's consistent with our goal. So, thank you, and I hope the superintendent will pass along our bravos to all the people that worked with you.
Absolutely. It was a team effort.
Anyone else? Ron, please.
Dr. Pigeon, excuse me. Can you give us any, what kind of feedback you got from the town officials from Friday?
Certainly. I can tell you that at the end of the presentation, there were probably, I would say, 60 or 70 folks in attendance, I'd have to go back and look at the list. There were absolutely no questions at the end of the presentation. I had also had the opportunity to reach out and have numerous conversations with our town managers. I've been pretty open in terms of where we've been at in our budget planning, and there were no questions. We also had the opportunity this fall to present before numerous boards of selectmen and finance committees. We offered ourselves to, to do that, and we did go to many towns. We offered ourselves to do that, and we did go to many towns. So we've been working really hard to make sure that folks had the information that they needed as soon as we could provide it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Any comments from the public? I see none. At that point, if there are no more comments, discussion is ended. I'll call a close to the open meeting on our 2020 budget. Thank you, Dr. Pidgeon. Well done.
Do you need a motion to adjourn from the public hearing?
Yes, I will. Motion's been made to adjourn from the public hearing, second by Don Air. Any comments? I'll call for a vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, any abstentions? The motion carries. 7:10, I'd like to go into our school committee meeting. Seeing as how we have a quorum from the last meeting, I will restate the public comments on the agenda. If there are any public comments, they have to be narrowed down to agenda topics only, and they will be taken for three minutes, and then we'll move on to the next person who would like to speak. This meeting is being taped and recorded, so if there's anyone here who's recording it besides our own folks, please let us know. And at this time, I would like to go into recognitions and achievements.
I'm going to ask Mr. Slavik to join me. We do have, we do not have any students of the month to recognize this month. They will be coming next month. We'll be doing all of our traditional recognitions in our next meeting. But we do have several students with us in the audience today that we're actually going to call up. We would like to formally thank for the time they are putting in this evening. We have numerous students that are actually behind the cameras and behind the equipment from our TV, media, theater arts production program, and I'm going to ask them to come forward now. We have Brian McCall of Pepperell, Nicole Fisher of Townsend, Emily Hansen of Groton, Abigail Poore of Chelmsford, Rachel Thompson of Littleton, all coming forward to be recognized by the school committee and the public for filming our meetings this evening. And I also want to have a special thank you for two of our instructors, Mr. Stevenson and Ms. Smith, for assisting in this process of filming as well. Thank you.
That closes recognitions and achievements, and at this time, without any further ado, we're going to stop taping. I just wanted to make sure that we had you guys recognized, and we'll send you folks home so you can get your homework done. Oh, I'm sorry, we have to do one more thing.
We're going to keep going.
You're going to have to clean that up.
Sorry.
I'm trying to get you guys out of here.
Edit that out.
Don, would you like to do the consent agenda, please?
I'd like to redo the warrant reports, and I move to approve the reports of the warrant subcommittee meetings held since our last meeting. Town spares warrants in the amount of $441,923.85, and payroll warrants in the amount of $670,747.8, for total warrants in the amount of $1,112,670.93.
Motion's been made in second. Are there any questions on the warrant report as presented? Seeing none, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed, any abstentions? The vote carries. Thank you. Now we can move into action items. Karen?
I move to approve the minutes of the January 28, 2020 School Committee Budget Workshop Meeting.
Second. Motion's been made in second. Is there any discussion?
Can you summarize what the results of the workshop were?
I think that's going to be, it's not under your report. Yes, we can.
So on January 8th, January 28, 2020, we held a full working session with the school committee in terms of the proposal that was presented before you today at public hearing. For the majority of the school committee members were here in attendance, and we did review the draft FY '21 total expense budget, which was presented to you at a little bit over a 3% increase. In addition, we did review the draft member assessments and how that works out for each member town. We had a pretty robust discussion about our next steps in terms of school choice and doing the incremental correction for the use of one-time funds to offset the budget. We talked about the other funding sources and OPEB as well. I think the discussions of the January 28 meeting really lent themselves to the budget that was presented to our town officials on Friday and then also presented to the public at public hearing this evening. Is that what you were looking for?
Thank you, very much.
Thank you, Dr. Pidgeon. Any other questions or comments? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed, any abstentions? The motion carries.
I move to approve the minutes of the January 14, 2020 School Committee Meeting.
Second. Motion's been made in second. Is there any conversation, concerns? I'll call for a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed, any abstentions? The motion carries.
I move to approve the certification of excess and deficiency as of July 1, 2019 in the amount of $633,476.
Second. Motion's been made in second. So I'm going to have Dr. Pidgeon give us a little update.
Actually, I'm going to turn the update over to Jean Savoy, our business manager.
Good evening. We were fortunate enough to, we submitted our E&amp;D back on October 31 as required by law, and I've been working with the Department of Revenue. Our representative there, Bobby J. Coburn, from the Town of Shirley, has been a wonderful asset to me and to our district, and we've been going back and forth and to get this approved in time, and she managed to push it through up to her supervisor and up to the trough level, so we'd have it for a vote tonight, so I was extremely pleased. We were expecting about $635 originally, and we were concerned, you know, because they sometimes subtract or add depending on if we had any deficiencies, and they did find we had a deficiency in our Project Lead the Way grant of $2,000 and some odd dollars, so that was deducted. And then we had the extra, we just left a little cushion for ourselves, so when we found out we were getting the extra $33,000, we did decide that the best choice was to add it to our OPEB account, because that would benefit the towns as much as anything without making the law adjustments to the town assessment, so we'd already planned. So that's where we are with the E&amp;D. So we're going to go ahead and use $600,000 to supplement the budget, and I said the additional $33,000 will go to supplement OPEB. If everyone is in agreement, we'd like for you to vote to certify that and to approve the uses.
Is there any comments, discussion? Seeing none, I'd like to do a roll call vote, Joanna.
On the machine.
On the machine, online.
You can just cast your vote, Joanna. You can cast. You can cast your vote, Joanna. He's trying to get back in.
He's trying to get back in.
Chris is trying to get back in. Motion?
Unanimous.
Unanimous.
Motion carries, unanimous. Thank you.
I move to approve the fiscal year '21 preliminary total expense budget in the amount of $15,443,17.
Second.
I'm sorry.
She's not done.
We have more to the motion, please.
Of which $14,808,151 will be funded through the general fund and $632,166 to be funded from the school choice fund. The district treasurer is hereby directed to certify the preliminary assessment to the towns, the total of $10,125,583.
Second. Motion's been made in second. Is there any discussion? Lawrence?
Question, if I may. Other than what we heard about the difference in excess and deficiencies, were there any other differences since the budget we've seen in scene and scene?
There were no other differences in the budget that you've seen numerous times over the last couple of weeks, with the exception of the increase that we received through the certification of E&amp;D that we received just at 2 o'clock today, and the additional funds that we received, which was just over $30,000, we've recommended to put directly towards OPEB. Other than that, the budget that you see today is the budget that you saw on Friday at the Town Officials Breakfast, is the budget that you saw at the workshop last week.
Thank you very much.
Any other comments? Sam?
Through the chair, just to note again, kudos again, but looking over the numbers again, a zero-based budget built from the ground up. And if we remove some of the percentages that aren't really a percentage increase, we're looking, by my math, at something just under 4% in real numbers. Is that pretty accurate?
3.26% overall.
3.26.
Yes.
I'm sorry, I didn't have my calculator with me, but I think all of our sending communities can be proud of how hard everyone has worked to keep their contributions as low as possible. We're barely above the absolute minimums, and even in that 3.2%, there are some increases that have to do with capital expenses in the future and transportation, et cetera, et cetera. So I think we're about as close to a level-funded budget as we could get. So, well, well done. I also want to commend, I'm sure there are other towns, but I took particular interest in the way the Chelmsford Town Manager worked with us, and I believe his estimate was within $100.
It was.
Was that the number?
That is.
Which I think is remarkable. So I'm pretty confident that our presentation at the Chelmsford Town Meeting is going to be well-received.
Thank you, Sam. Anyone else? Because of the importance of this, Joanna, I'm going to call for electronic vote, please. The motion carries unanimous. Thank you very much. Now, at this time, it's with great pleasure to bring this show to an end. Students that we have tonight, thank you again so much. Staff that have stayed, I really appreciate that. This is one of our three televised, taped and televised meetings that we do each year, and we, the school committee, feel it's very important to be as transparent as we can so that you know where every dollar you give us is going to. We use it well, we use it wisely. So again, thank you very much, and on behalf of the school committee and the staff, we'll see you at the next meeting. Thank you again.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.